Okay, David, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning and welcome to everybody. We will call to order this regular meeting of the Lawrence County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, October 1 of 2024. Just a couple of housekeeping items. I'll note that we are live streaming the meeting and it's also being recorded. We would ask if you have any type of electronic communication device? If you'd please put it on silent or vibrate, we would appreciate you doing that. Let me also note that Commissioner Sonoda is out of town today, but with two of us here, that still constitutes a quorum. So we will be able to conduct our business. We always begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'd ask you remain standing for a moment of silence. So Mr. Kennedy, could you please pledge your allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Please remain standing. We'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Vanessa, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Bellver?
Here. So we do have two of us, and again, that constitutes a quorum. You'll note, and by the way, did everybody get an agenda? They are available if anyone needs one. And we'll note that during the course of the meeting, we have two opportunities for public comment. One in a few moments and then one prior to adjournment of this meeting. If your comments are related to county government matters, we certainly welcome them and you're welcome to speak both times. If you just wish to speak one of the two times, that's fine. Or if you prefer just to listen, that's also fine. We'd ask if you try to keep your comments to about five minutes or so. We appreciate that courtesy. If your concerns deal with federal issues, we recommend you contact your federal congressman or U.S. senators. If they are state-related, we recommend you talk to your state House or state senate members. And if they are local in nature, city, borough, township, school board, we suggest you go to those folks. But if they are county-related, we're certainly here to listen. Item two on the agenda, we always set aside time if any of our elected row officers wish to attend the meeting. They're not obligated to be here, but we always set aside time in case any of them are. And today, none of them are with us. So for public comment, we'll open it up. And if you would, for the record, state your name and we'll call on you. So are there any initial public comments? Ms. Miss Hahn?
Yes, I have a few questions to start. Does the county pay for the district attorney's website? Is that all part of the same, it's under the same?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, that would fall under this budget.
Okay, and so it's maintained by our IT department also?
That's my understanding, yes.
So you may not be aware, but the district attorney's office has its own open records officer. That actually was, became evident also in the new right-to-know law policy that the county passed. They made a point several times of noting that there's two separate officers. However, the district attorney's webpage does not list who the open records officer is, and there is no policy listed there either. So the public has no way of submitting a right-to-know request to the district attorney's office, which is a violation of sunshine law and the right-to-know law. And just as far as transparency, I'm aware that there were some records that were requested from the district attorney's office. The request was submitted to the county, to Emily Sanchez Corradine, who's the open records officer. And instead of transferring that request to the DA's open records officer, she became involved in that, but then in the end said, you know, it wasn't filed properly, when that was a simple correction. So, you know, not just passing along that simple request and frustrating the public from trying to get public records is just unacceptable. I guess I'm going to save my comments to later in the discussion.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Ryan?
So, want me to come up?
No, you're fine.
Okay, so I'm Lynn Ryan with Chair of the Lawrence County Republican Party. And it has come to my attention that Elizabeth Dupree, who is with Bax Collin, has entered a statement for the defense of Lawrence County in a case that is a King's Bench case that is going to the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania. And on behalf of all registered Republicans in Lawrence County and in the state and honestly in the country, because this is a national election and all eyes are on Pennsylvania this year, I would like to know why we're hiring a left-wing law firm to represent Republicans of our county in this case. It isn't a case of fish and wildlife or zoning with Cascade Park or something like that. This is election law. And we work so hard to instill in people confidence in our voting laws and the way that we perform our elections. And it's very disheartening that we have, we have a filing, but I don't know where you're gonna vote to hire her, I guess. She has donated money to Nancy Pelosi. Her firm has donated tens of thousands of dollars to all liberal candidates, Democrats, Joe Manchin of West Virginia, Kathleen Cooper, but tens of thousands of dollars, none to Republicans. And yet, this is who is going to defend Lawrence County in this case. A lot of people will have, a lot of registered Republicans in this county will have and have expressed to me a lot of discernment on this decision or on this potential decision. She also, this woman, Elizabeth Dupree, fought to overturn a mail-in ballot cast in person by a woman who lives in New York State and cast her vote in Center County. She was a college student. Her dormitory had been torn down for three years, and yet, she was voting as a resident of that dormitory. So this is who we are looking to defend our election law in Lawrence County. She also joined with Philadelphia and Delaware County fighting the Zuckerberg money in the 2020 election, which was later overturned. We won that, the Republicans in the state won that case, and the legislation overturned it. But, you know, the damage was already done in that election. He infiltrated over three and a half million dollars' worth of what they called Zuckerbucks into the state of Pennsylvania, and it was to hire Democrats to work the polls. So, or to poll watch. So, you know, it's very disheartening. We worked so hard to get you all elected, to have a strong Republican base in this county. And it almost appears as if this is how they're gonna cheat this year, because we're beating them in mail-in, you know, we're knocking it out of the park in registration and mail-in ballots. And is this how they're gonna cheat this year? So I just want to voice my concerns, because, you know, we have Republican lawyers. I just saw one from this courthouse right now. We have Republican lawyers in this county. There's a huge law firm in Harrisburg, Mark's Grange, who they have over 75 attorneys at that. You know, he himself has fought cases in one in the Supreme Court of the United States. He's more than qualified, his firm is more than qualified. And, you know, I tried to get, I asked you, you know, which, you may have it, I don't know. She asked them a right-to-know, how much are we paying this Bessie Dupree? You know, where's the contract with her for this? Because I guarantee I can get Republican law firms that are more than qualified to match her rate, if not beat her rate, and defend us. And it's, you know, it's not just Lawrence County. This is happening in several other counties. I've been on the phone with those county chairs. They are more than concerned, because we know. We are just constantly fighting an uphill battle on winning these elections and on trying to instill voter confidence. It's a very hard, very hard element in this election environment. And also, you know, no one should have the right to force a hearing policy on us, because people can't follow the rules, which is what this case is about. And it could prolong our election results for days, if not weeks. Each case gets their own hearing. It could tie up our court system. It could tie up, you know, they say Philadelphia can have tens of thousands of cases that challenge this. You know, if you can't get your ballot right when you vote, that's your fault. You should not have a second chance to go back and redo your ballot. And that's basically the crux of this case. So I just, you know, I'm just pleading the case on behalf of all the people that I represent in this county and across the state and nation, that, you know, could we please get a firm that would at least see light policies and take our side in something as important as our election law? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan. Any other public comments at this time? David?
I'd just like to clarify from prior discussion. The county IT department does not manage the DA website. Just a county.
Who wouldn't happen to know who knows management for Spark Design?
That sounds familiar, but I am not 100% sure of that.
That's your understanding, right? Thank you, I appreciate your clarifying that. So thank you, David. Other public comments at this time?
Can I just add to something that Lynn had brought up? Even before the lawsuits were filed against all the counties, Board of Elections noted that they are providing a courtesy call to cure the mail-in ballots if people leave the dates and signatures off. And there's already been litigation passed on this that, you know, we can't be doing this. So I would just ask that the county end that practice. We should not be curing that, and you have the ability to stop that practice.
Thank you. I do want to clarify one thing, though. We're talking about the applications for the ballots, not the ballots themselves. We're talking about the documents that allow people to apply for ballots. The ballots themselves are not looked at until the time comes when they're fed into the tabulating machines. So just to be clear, it's the applications, not the ballots. Are there any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Clarify that, then. Is that?
Could I have your main for the record?
I'm Dr. Daniel Cowley.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Is this contrary to what you were saying, Lynn?
No, I think it's part of the case. I think that this is all about curing ballots. So after they're opened, they will have another chance. They could, they could challenge this. This is the King's Bench case that's going before the Supreme, which is why, you know, I employ that, or, you know, advocate that we employ a Republican representing us to a law firm that has our back in this case. You know, but it's, I, the way that it's, that I understand it and it's interpreted by most people is that once they, this, if this passes, if this challenge passes, that once they open the ballots, if they see that someone undervoted or they voted wrong or whatever, they then could challenge it. And there's a hearing for each case, each specific case, there's a hearing. You know, why are we allowing Al Schmidt, the Secretary of State, to tell us in Lawrence County that you had, you had to, yeah, you, yeah, how to run our election? We're, that's the common law. It's 67 different rules, which, you know, for whatever reason, I disagree with all that personally in a federal election, but it is what it is. And for right now, we're a common law, and there's 67 different sets of rules in the state of Pennsylvania on voting. So, but why are we allowing someone else to dictate to us how to do this? And like I said, it could tie up the courts, and we will have national media descending on us. I mean, we're gonna need the new Florida from the, you know, Gore Bush. I mean, this could, could go on. We won't have a decision on Pennsylvania for days, if not weeks, after the election. For what? So the people who didn't get it right, didn't follow the instructions, didn't, you know, get a second chance to vote and change their vote possibly? I just, it just has the potential to be ripe with corruption. Or, you know.
Thank you. Other public comments? Okay, thank you all very much. And once again, prior to adjournment, we will reopen for other opportunities for public comments. Thank you all. Moving along under fiscal and contractual, periodically, we receive documentation from our tax claim office. As we've explained in the past, that when real estate taxes are delinquent, they are referred to the tax claim office, and they go through a process whereby, initially, there is an opportunity for the public to bid on those properties through a public tax sale. And first, the first sale is known as an upset sale. Properties that are not sold at the upset sale then go to the second sale, six months later, in what is known as a free and clear sale. The properties that do not sell at either of those sales then are referred back to the tax claim office, where they are listed in a document that is known as the repository. And that document is upstairs in the tax claim office. People can come in and, it's broken down by municipality, and here in the city, it's broken down by each of the eight wards in the city. And individuals can come in and inspect that document, see what properties are out there on that list. And these individuals can then bid on those properties. The bids are then forwarded to the three taxing bodies, the local city, borough, or township, the school district in which the property is located, and then the county itself. As a rule, the county waits until both the municipality and the school district have had the opportunity to vote on these bids. And today, we have a number of them, all of which are from the city of Newcastle, all of which have been reviewed and voted on by Newcastle City Council. And then following that, Newcastle area school district also voted on them. And we have to take them one at a time, so we're going to start with, what's our first number today?
293.
293, this will be Resolution 293. This is a bid, again, in the city of Newcastle. The location is Cumberland Avenue. The ID number is 03-013300. The current property owner is James Hambrick. The entity that made the bid on the property is the Bible Way Church of God in Christ. They made a $500 bid on this parcel. Newcastle City Council approved the bid on September 6, and the Newcastle Area School Board did likewise on September 16 of this year. It now comes before us. I should also note that if one of the three taxing bodies chooses to deny the bid, then the bid is rejected in total. So you have to have all three taxing bodies agree to the bid as submitted. So Mr. Kennedy, I'll give you, anytime you might need to look these over, but whenever you're ready, if you wish to make a motion on this proposal.
I'll make it.
And your motion is to accept the bid, is that right? Thank you. That's how it's worded in the, in the resolution, that the county accepts the bid of the Bible Way Church of God in Christ, as did the city of Newcastle, Newcastle School District. Dan, any other concerns?
No.
Okay. I'll second your motion, and we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I apologize, this is a little bit tedious, and it's not the most thrilling thing we have to go through, but we do have to enter all of this into the record, so please bear with us. In fact, I'm wondering if, Dan, if you want to give some thought to this, and we'll ask Chris, maybe going forward, we can always move these down toward the end of the meeting. Something to think about. Counselor, we wouldn't be in any terms of where we place this on the agenda. We have that.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. I was saying, you know, we're making you sit here, go through all this, but it's something we have to do. So thank you for your patience. The next proposed resolution is number 294. This bid is made by Marsha Hudson in the amount of $500. It's for a parcel on Hamilton Street in the city of Newcastle. It'll be in the 5th Ward. The ID number is 05113700. City Council approved it on September 6. Newcastle School Board of Directors did likewise on September 16. This is number 294, and we can take similar action if you're so inclined, Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 295.
Thank you, and I will second your motion. Do you have any concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. The next proposal is from Mr. Richard McVeigh. He has placed a $500 bid. Incidentally, I may have said it, forgive me if I repeat myself, the minimum bid is $500 on these parcels. His bid was for $500 for a parcel on East Main Street in the city of Newcastle in the 3rd Ward. The ID number is 03-071400. Newcastle City Council approved this bid on September 6, and the Newcastle Area School Board did the same on September 16. It is now ready for us to consider. Mr. Kennedy?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 295.
Thank you, sir, and I will second your motion. Do you have any questions or concerns?
No.
Thank you. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Number 296 is a bid of $500 made by Tiffany Wiley for a parcel on Pennsylvania Avenue in the city of Newcastle. The ID number of the parcel, and this is in the 5th Ward, 05058100. City Council approved it on September 6, and the school board did the same on September 16. It now comes to our attention.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 297.
Thank you, Dan. I will second your motion, and I'll see if you have any questions.
No.
Thank you. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Number 297, this is for a parcel in the 3rd Ward on Cumberland Avenue. The parcel number is 03-013200. The bid is $500. It was made by the Bible Way Church of God in Christ. City Council approved it on September 6, and the school board approved it on September 16, and now it comes before the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Kennedy?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 297.
Thank you, Dan. I'll second your motion, and I'll ask you if you have any concerns.
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Number 298 is a bid that was made by, I believe it would be pronounced Jerrel or Gerald Wolfe. And his bid was for $550. It is for a parcel in the 5th Ward, 05-058100. The city council voted to not accept the bid on September 6. The Newcastle Area School Board did the same. They voted to reject the bid. And you'll note that earlier in the meeting, we did approve a bid for the same parcel that was made by Tiffany Wiley. So the other two taxing bodies have selected Ms. Wiley's bid over that of the Wolfe bid. And so it now comes before us. Mr. Kennedy, any thoughts or concerns? Would you wish to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to reject Resolution 298.
Thank you. That'll be rejecting the bid. And thank you. I will second your motion. Generally, we put a good deal of thought in what the local, particularly what the local municipality does, whether it's the city or one of our boroughs or townships. Their elected officials are closer to a lot of these things than we are. And they have a better knowledge of their neighborhoods. And so we generally respect the decisions that are made by the cities, boroughs, townships, and the school boards as well. So you've made the motion, I've offered the second. Dan, unless you have anything else? Okay, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bellver?
Yes, which rejects a bid.
Correct.
Thank you. Next on our agenda would be the warrant register. Actually, we only received one. The warrant register, which is also known as the check reconciliation register, is a document that the county comptroller's office puts together. It's a listing of all of the bills that the county has paid. In this case, these were all put together back on September 25 of this year. And anybody wishing to see these will gladly share them with you. And Dan, take whatever time you need to look them over. Whenever you're ready, I could take a motion to accept.
I looked them over already, and I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, thank you. And I looked at them this morning, so I will second your motion. Dan, did you have any concerns or questions on any of them?
John, I did, Joe, we interviewed.
Okay. Very good, sir. Thank you. And by the way, my packet when we're done, I always give it to Ms. Walker from the Newcastle News. So, Debbie, I'll have this for you when we're finished. We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to accept the warrant register submitted to us by the comptroller's office. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. You know, I just realized, and I don't know, Dan, did you have the minutes in your packet? I'm not sure if we have the minutes, Vanessa.
Um, I don't know. Can you either run up and get them, or?
Um, we can, we can vote on them, actually.
Okay.
Okay. That's fine. I, you know, I let through this morning, and shame on me for not catching it.
I know, I did too. Like you said, we got a new employee, and we're all working together and trying to get everything together, so.
Okay, that's quite all right.
We missed it.
We can, we can insert, we can include it in next week's agenda and vote on it at that time.
Okay.
Under written communications, we do have to periodically enter into the record documents that have come into either our office or the planning office. And in this case, we did receive one piece of correspondence from the Hillcrest Group. They are an environmental consultant company based in Wexford, Pennsylvania. And this was addressed to Amy McKinney, the director of the Office of Planning and Development here at Forehouse. It reads as follows. "This is to notify you that Glacial Sand and Gravel will be submitting to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection an air quality plan approval application to install a new sand and gravel operation located at 4338 Harlinsburg Road in Scott Township, Lawrence County. The facility is capable of processing 400 tons per hour and 1.8 million tons per year of sand and gravel. The plant will consist of a pit conveyor, dump hoppers, crushers, screens, stockpiles, et cetera. The plant will be a minor source of air pollution under both federal and state regulations. It will be subject to federal new source performance standards in 40 CFR Part 60 Subpart 000 for non-metallic mineral processing plants and Pennsylvania DEP requirements. This notice is being provided in accordance with the municipal notification requirements in Pennsylvania 25, Pennsylvania Code 127.43 (A). It's signed by Joseph Pezzi, project air consultant." The requirement here is, as noted, that the vote of the county and I would imagine Scott Township supervisors received similar correspondence. Law requires that various municipalities be made aware of this. Law requires that various municipalities be made aware of this. County has real no regulatory authority over this operation, but again, the law requires that we be made aware of it. So, we'll just take a vote to enter this into the record. So, Mr. Kennedy, would you wish to make a motion to accept this document?
I'll make a motion to accept the document from the Hillcrest Group.
Thank you. I will second your motion. I'll see if you have any comments or concerns.
No.
Thank you, Dan. Last for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bovler?
Uh, yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We go down to staff reports. We set a little bit of time aside each week for, give the commissioners an opportunity to make any announcements or pass along any comments that they might have. I will simply note that tomorrow, which is Wednesday, October 2nd already, the county's Conservation District Board of Directors will hold their monthly meeting at 12 noon. And this month, they're actually moving up, they're having the meeting up in Wilmington Township at Ryder's Restaurant, which is at the corner of State Route 208 and State Route 18. Conservation District is not a county agency per se. They are based here at the courthouse, but the folks that work for them are not county employees. Conservation District does receive funding from Commonwealth. The county also provides them with funding. State law requires that the Board of Directors have at least, have one county commissioner serve on their board. I've been holding that position for a number of years now. So, that meeting tomorrow is open to the public, if anybody wishes to attend. And the other thing I'll note, because it's not on the printed agenda, next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, excuse me, next Tuesday, I stand corrected, next Tuesday, October 8th, at 1:30 in the afternoon, the three commissioners, and I hope you have that on your calendar, West Central for next Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. The three of us, and the three Mercer County Commissioners comprise the governing board of West Central Job Partnership, which is a two-county agency that, for the most part, administers the two career links, the one located here in Newcastle and the one up in the city of Sharon. So, the law requires that the Boards of Commissioners serve as the governing board, and we meet on a quarterly basis. So, next Tuesday, October 8th, six of us will be meeting, and we go back and forth. So, it's Mercer County's turn to host. So, if anybody wishes to attend that meeting, it will be held at 1:30 in the afternoon at the Mercer County Courthouse. Those are my comments this morning, and I'll turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Kennedy.
Geez, last week, I was, Chris, I was all over the place. We started out on Wednesday night with New Horizons, the new school at the old, I'll call it the YBC Center. We went out for an open house, and that was very well attended. Thursday night, we all were at the YMCA salute to courage dinner, saluting Dr. Bet. Very nice lady that is dedicated to UPMC and Jamison Hospital, how she's moved on to past and mechanics. But what a story. She dedicated her life to something dear to my heart, because I had a heart surgery. What a great lady. I got to talk to her quite a bit after. Nice, nice young lady. And then Friday, I was, American Legion had their annual gun raffle, and I just stepped in there for a while. Saturday, Elwood City had their car show, and we went down there for a while. And then we come back up, and I won't forget this one, it was my sister-in-law's 70th birthday, and the kids had a party. So, I had to jump in and go to that one in the middle of all that. We come back up, and then Saturday night, it was something really special here in Monmouth County. Kim Kohler Jones and her Board of Directors at the Hoyt had a really nice show, really nice activity. And we spent the night Saturday night there. And then Sunday, I got to go to something I never went to, but the old timers, they had Cascade Park. For the first year back after COVID, they did a really good job and had a really good turnout. So, I had a pretty good weekend. By Sunday night, I was about done. And I'll be glad when Chris gets back, so he can do his running again.
Anything else, Mr. Kennedy?
That's about it this week. We've got a couple things we want to, we'll be throwing in at the end.
You're a very busy man. We appreciate you representing us at those various community functions, so thank you for that. This takes us to new business. I don't, oh, Mary, there you are. I'm sorry. You've been there the whole time, too. Forgive me. The first item on our new business agenda is from the planning office, and Mary Glass is with us. And Mary, we always appreciate your coming over. Your resolution would be, am I right, 299?
Yes.
Vanessa, thank you. And the county administers the Community Development Block Grant Program, which are federal dollars that come in. It's broken out as follows. The city of Newcastle is its own recipient. They get their own block of money from the feds, and they administer those dollars, and they determine how those dollars will be spent. The way the law is written, we have three municipalities that receive CBBT money that's earmarked specifically for them, Union Township, Shenango Township, and the Borough of Elwood City. The way the regulations are written, the county serves as the, we administer those dollars, but it would be their local elected officials that determine how those dollars are going to be spent. We don't take a role in that. We simply administer the dollars. And then, thirdly, for all the remaining municipalities, they have given an opportunity each year to apply for some of these development block grant dollars. So, the reason Mary is here today is the Borough of Elwood City has reached out to us, giving us an idea of how they would wish to spend some of those dollars. Mary, I'll turn it over to you. You could fill us in on what the Borough is proposing.
They're proposing ADA curb ramp improvement project. Previously, this went out to bid, and we only received one bid, and it was over budget. So, we are putting it out. We would like permission to advertise and put it out to bid.
Thank you. And of course, ADA is Americans, the Disabilities Act. So, these are improvements to allow people better access sidewalks and that sort of thing.
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, so. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions for Mary?
Just that these bids come back to your department, or do they go to the Alwood?
They go through the PEN bid.
And then they come back to your department?
Yes.
Then Alwood, you go through what the Alwood?
And the PEN bid is the system that's, it's an online bidding system.
Correct.
That we've implemented here. So, we'll follow that format. There's sealed bids.
Yes.
And there's a deadline for people to make those bids. So, we will do, what you're asking today is for authorization to do the advertising, which would be on October 7th, October 14th, and the bids would be due on November 18th.
Correct.
And then hopefully, we'll get some bids that are workable, and that would allow the Borough of Elwood City to move forward with this project. Thank you. Dan, any other questions for Mary?
No.
So, all we're doing today is giving you the authorization to move forward with the advertising.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion for this resolution?
I'll make a motion for the resolution 297.
Thank you, Dan. I'll second your motion, and I'll ask if you have any other concerns. Thank you. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bovler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Mary, it's always great to see you. Thanks for coming with today.
Thanks.
You too. Next on our agenda, our Information Technology Department. Mr. Borgnarrow, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Bill Borgnarrow is the Director of our IT Department. David Kumo is in the back. He's also part of that department, so they keep our computers humming every day, which we greatly appreciate. Bill, you have a resolution number 300, which would allow us to consider entering into an agreement with Verizon of Pennsylvania for, I'll let you fill us in on what they're asking for.
Sure. I'll try to keep it simple without being too technical. Good morning, Commissioners. Basically, the AOPC has connection to every county's courthouses, and they maintain that direct connection for us through our court system.
And forgive me, that's Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts for us as a state.
Anyhow.
Thank you.
So, that circuit that we currently have and other counties have is slow and outdated. So, they are replacing them with fiber. So, this resolution is just to allow, right away, because it's public telephone poles and utilities, it gives them the right to say that they're the owner of the line coming in, and it gives them, we're given rights to allow them to come into the building with the new equipment. And so, it's just a legal formality. So, but this is all on AOPC, so.
And from what I'm hearing you say, this is being replicated in other courthouses around the county?
Correct.
Thank you.
It will have to the new century, I guess, you know?
Yes.
The faster, bigger, better.
Right. Bill, when this does come to fruition, I'm assuming when they, they'll notify you and say, hey, we're ready to come in. I'm assuming you would let our maintenance department know that they're coming in, so they're not caught off guard?
Correct.
Thank you. Let me see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions.
No.
Thank you. Dan, would you wish to make a motion for this?
I'll make a motion for the resolution.
Thank you. I will second your motion. Bill, anything else you need to add?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bovler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Bill, thanks for bringing us here. We appreciate it. Take care. I'm looking to see if anybody is here from Human Resources. Could you, could you mind, since it's right outside the door? We'll stand in recess for just a second or two, see if somebody's available from each art department right across the street here, so. Oh, there you are. Hi, Mike. That's quite all right. Please, would you mind, so that's all, fill you in on what we're talking about, so that we don't catch you totally off guard. Mr. Akabon is our Director of Human Resources. And Mike, this is a proposed resolution 301, which I think Vanessa gave you a copy of.
Yes.
Take whatever time you need to look it over, and then if you could just give us a very brief summary of what this involves, and then hopefully, we can take appropriate action.
This is an annual agreement that we have with Ruschini for the Agents Protection and Affordable Care Act. And that just makes sure that people are in compliance with us providing insurance or knowing whether or not they have insurance, to make sure that they're in compliance with that act. So, it's something that we review every year. And Ruschini takes care of this for us, so that we are sure that we're in compliance. So, they do the individual statements for each employee, and it's a charge that they have for us, so that we don't have to go through and make sure nobody slips through the cracks.
Based on what you've presented, the company with whom we've dealt for quite some time is based in Indiana County, and, excuse me, I'm sorry. And the form, the federal form is known as a Form 1095. And if I recall, each year, we do get that form.
Yes.
And I generally hand it to my accountant. He knows what it's all about, so you recall getting them as well. So, this group, Ruschini Group, helps us in the documentation and the processing of all of these.
Yes, Ruschini helps us with all of our providers, whether it be Highmark or Unum. And they help, they're helping us now put everything on one platform.
Right.
So, that it's more cost effective for the county. And they've been great. They're just, they overlook everything that we do, make sure they're all compliant.
That's good. That gives you a comfort level, and certainly would give us one as well. Mr. Kennedy, do you have any questions for Mr. Akabon?
Not at all.
Okay. So, Mike, you're recommending that we move forward with this.
Yes.
You know, my bad memory, I'm assuming we maybe do this every year anyway, right? Okay, so this is an annual thing that we have to take action on. Could I have a motion for resolution 301?
Oh, my.
Thank you, Dan. I will second your motion. Dan, anything else?
No.
Mike, anything?
No.
Okay. We'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bovler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mike, thanks for coming in. We appreciate your help. The next item on the agenda, number 302, involves the ratification of a collective bargaining agreement between the county and one of our employee unions, in this case, the American Federation of State and County and Municipal Employees Local 2902. The current contract with this union expires at the end of this calendar year. Earlier this year, our county administrator, Mr. Banasco, and our county solicitor, attorney of the door, undertook the negotiating process, and a tentative agreement was reached. My understanding is, and I'll let the solicitor verify this, my understanding is that the members of the union voted, and a majority of them voted to approve the proposed contract. Now, in order to finalize it, it takes the, a vote of this Board of Commissioners to finish the process. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Madore for any details that you wish to add, Jason.
Thank you. As you are aware, we negotiated this contract with Asme. We were fortunate to begin the negotiations early, and were able to get a tentative agreement early. This is a four-year agreement. I will note in the resolution that it states that it is a three-year agreement. However, the commencement is January 1st, 2025, terminating December 31st, 2028, which is four years. So, I respectfully ask to change three years to four years on the resolution. We receive the instructions from the commissioners before we begin negotiations. And a point of emphasis from the commissioners was to try to shore up retention and the retention of certain specific employees within the county. Within this group, it would be the caseworkers within CYS and the maintenance staff. So, we attacked up pretty hard and created entirely new case structure for the caseworkers, which made us not only just be competitive with surrounding counties and private organizations, but also hopefully be a preferred landing spot for people with social service skills. Additionally, with the maintenance staff, we increased the rates we felt we were lagging behind, both on a private and public perspective. So, we're hoping that this will give our department heads the ability to recruit the best people for the jobs. We do have cost certainty for four years. We have a flat reimbursement for insurance policies for four years. We maintain the consistency with the other collective bargaining agreements, and also for non-union employees, when it comes to other pay time off and bridge benefits that we have. And we're confident that this is a reasonable resolution for both the county and for Asme.
Well, and I know both you and Mr. Banasco put a great deal of time and effort into this process. And if I'm not mistaken, we have this union, we have Teamsters who represent courts and court-related offices. The Teamsters also represent somewhat separately the jail employees, if I'm not mistaken. The sheriff's deputies have a union specific to them. And the district attorney's office, the, help me with this.
Detective Bureau.
The detectives have a union. If I'm not mistaken, this is the only union, correct if I'm wrong, that has a right to strike clause. Is that, is that your understanding?
You are correct.
Okay. The other ones cannot strike.
Correct.
Asme could, but if, and again, correct if I'm wrong, by ratifying this union, that guarantees, barring an unforeseen circumstance, we'll have four years where a strike cannot occur.
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
I am happy.
Just thank you, too, gentlemen, for giving this time. If you wouldn't play along with this. Do you have anything to offer?
No.
Okay.
You know, it was a long negotiation, but it was a good negotiation. Thank you to Jason for all of his hard work in this. Getting it done, I'm glad to get it off the table. Quite honestly.
Well, we want to thank the members of the union for voting affirmatively to accept the proposal. It was reached, the agreement was reached. So it's up to us now, Dan. Would you wish to make a motion for resolution 302, including the corrective language noting that the agreement will run for a four-year period?
I'll make that.
I will second. Gentlemen, any last concerns? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Counselor, thank you. I believe you have other matters, but I think we'll get there very shortly. Thank you, sir. The next resolution.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
There's an old number on that.
Yes, I see that, so we'll scratch.
Yep, 303.
Yeah, this is 303, that's fine. What was on our copy here? It said Resolution 2024-85, I think. I scratched it out, but the 85 is incorrect. This resolution is number 303. This involves a county-owned bridge in Perry Township in the southern end of the county. It's the McCartney Hollow Road Bridge. McCartney Hollow Road comes off the State Route 488 in Perry Township just outside of Werderburg. And our bridge engineers, Taylor Engineering noted that we needed to make some repairs and upgrades to the guide rails at this bridge. And Taylor Engineering received a quote. It did not have to go through the formal fitting process because it fell below the threshold requiring sealed bits. The quote comes from Penline Company, and the amount they submitted is $5,275 for the completion of this guide rail enhancement project at the McCartney Hollow Road Bridge in Perry Township. For us, for this to move forward, we would need a motion.
I'll make that one.
Dan, thank you, I'll second your motion. I'll see if you have any concerns. Thank you, sir. Take a roll call, please.
Just for your information, Taylor Engineering said that they received two quotes.
Oh, okay, thank you, yeah, appreciate your noting that. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks again, Vanessa.
You're welcome.
Well, counselor, we'll have to have you come back up again, if you don't mind, for the next two items. The first one is Proposed Resolution 304. It notes here that all 67 election boards throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, including Lawrence County, have been named as defendants in a lawsuit entitled The Republican National Committee et al. versus Al Schmidt et al. Supreme Court Middle District Docket Number 108 MM 2024 in the Commonwealth Court, Pennsylvania. Is that stated correctly to your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Commonwealth Court? Thank you. And it appears since this litigation will take place in Harris. Yes, ma'am?
No.
It's Supreme Court. It's changed Supreme Court.
Does right to.
It is.
Okay.
It's changed. It's changed.
It's changed bench petition.
Does right to the Supreme Court.
Did the case, was the case in Commonwealth Court at some point?
I believe that they're access directly to this Supreme Court.
Okay, so let's scratch the word Commonwealth Court from the resolution. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And we have a proposed engagement letter from the firm of Babst Cowan to serve as counsel for the Lawrence County Board of Elections in the lawsuit, along with numerous other counties, if I'm not mistaken. I'll let you fill us in, please.
Yes, thank you. Prior to me being solicitor, my predecessor, Tom Legley, began contracting with Babst Cowan for a multitude of election-related lawsuits that started coming into the county and into the Commonwealth, I believe in 2019. Mostly federally related election lawsuits. The purpose of hiring Babst Cowan was twofold. One, the experience that they had in relation to election-related lawsuits. And two, the collective that we could become a part of with other counties. We've maintained that relationship now for the past five years. There have been a few to several election-related lawsuits over the past five years, of which we've been, we've maintained being a part of the collective, which ranges from 12 to 16 counties, given based on the case. The counties that were normally part of the consortium are Blair, Carvin Center, Clinton, Columbia, Dauphin, Huntington, Indiana, Jefferson, Montour, Monroe, Northumberland, Snyder, Vanango, and York. If you'll notice, a lot of those counties are fifth and sixth-class counties similar to us. They have a smaller law department similar to us. These cases are particularly difficult for smaller law departments because, as you recognize in the case itself, there are always a minimum of 68 defendants in these cases, the 67 counties and the Department of State. And then there's one, most of the time, several plaintiffs. Each one of those parties need to file documents related to any procedural notice that goes on entering the appearance, filing an answer, filing a brief. It has become time prohibitive for smaller counties like us to try to tackle this alone. Primarily when we have these types of cases, we confer with Babst Cowan and we come up with a game plan of how we would like to proceed. Most of the times, the way we like to proceed is just to let the courts know, just tell us one way or the other. We don't have an opinion one way or the other. And a lot of these cases have to do with something related to absentee and mail-in ballotting. We follow, we, in Lawrence County, consider ourselves to be following strict adherence to the Election Code. That was a policy and a procedure that was put in place by Ed Allison, our current elections director, Tim Germanius followed it. I follow it with him. We are strict constructionists when it comes to the Election Code. So we just follow the Election Code, and there are certain interpretations that counties have the ability to make within the Election Code. But if the appellate courts make a determination and the order is to follow certain rules within that Election Code, we follow it. We just want to know one way or the other. You tell us what to do, we'll make sure it's done properly. Right now, there are two cases that we're contracted with Babst Cowan, and then there are two more cases that just came up over the past two weeks, both of them asking for a direct petition to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. One of them is dealing with the dating of envelopes, the outer envelope, and one of them is dealing with curing absentee ballots. I would respectfully request that we maintain our relationship with Babst Cowan, allow them to continue, allow us to continue being a part of the consortium that we have been for the past five years. It is, it's very cost-effective for us. I just brought the last two bills that we've gotten from Babst Cowan. The last case bill for election litigation regarding the NAACP case and the Aiken case, which were two similar cases regarding the exterior dating of envelopes. The total cost, and keep in mind, this was from the months of May and June, the total cost was $1,311. Split between all 16 counties, our cost was $81.95. So it cost us $40 a month. The other case was the Zimmerman versus Schmidt case, which actually just ended as of September 27. That case dealt with central canvassing. The case was questioning whether counties had the right to centrally canvass absentee ballots the way we have all of the absentee ballots coming to the courthouse. That was over the course of June, July, and August. The total cost was $3,888. Our 1/16 share of that was $243. So it cost us $80 a month over the course of that. So I see great value in continuing our relationship with Babst Cowan. I never asked Babst Cowan anything related to what their political leaning was. I've never seen anything in relation to how we go forward with the cases. Now, I would ask the commissioners to continue the relationships regarding these two recent cases. I expect these cases to be fast. I expect them to go up to the Supreme Court and decision to be quickly made and the cases to be done.
So just to clarify again, you've been solicitor how long now, Mr. Madore?
Since September of 2020.
2020. And you're indicating to us that the county's relationship with this firm predates your being here?
Yes, sir.
That it was your predecessor, Attorney Leslie, the late Attorney Leslie, who initiated this relationship between the county and the small one?
Yes, sir.
And you stated that there are 16 counties, roughly 16?
Yes, most of the time between 12 and 16 counties.
Okay. But do likewise?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The first, number 304, as noted, is the lawsuit Republican National Committee versus Al Schmidt. I'm going to see if Mr. Kennedy has comments or questions.
No.
So your recommendation on this first one is that we execute the agreement letter with this firm as it relates to this specific lawsuit?
Yes, sir.
May I have a motion for number 304?
I'd like to make an objection. And I'd like my objection recorded for the minutes. I did ask before the meeting began for a copy. Under the Sunshine Law, you're required to provide all board documents. So a financial agreement, like this agreement with Babst Cowan, is public record from the moment the door opens. We're allowed to review that financial record before you vote on it, not afterwards. Otherwise, it's a violation of the Sunshine Law.
Your comments are so noted, notwithstanding the fact that they are not presented during the public comment period, but your comments are so noted. Dan, I'm sorry, you did make the motion?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, you have other questions?
Yeah.
This is Schmidt one, this is one that's already done.
You're saying we already, already sent some bill for it?
No, no, there's a.
There's another one?
Yes. Yeah, there's two cases that we are actively built for, and then there's two cases that will start.
This being one of them?
This being one of them.
Dan, anything else you'd like to ask on this personally? I'll make the motion. I will second. Any further discussion, counselor, anything else you need to add?
No, sir.
And we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Number 305 is a different lawsuit, similar set of circumstances. This is the case of the New PA Project Education Fund versus Al Schmidt. Counselor, again, I'm sure a lot of this is similar, but do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, this case deals with, this is another type of NAACP case that has to do with exterior dating of ballots. Right now, we do not count absentee ballots that have no exterior date on them. And there's been several cases litigating this, and we follow the cases that have come down, and so far, no cases have changed the determination that we do not count these. So until we hear other ones.
Okay, thank you for offering that. Let me ask more of a procedural question. The matters we're discussing right now obviously pertain to our voter services office. And law stipulates that the three commissioners service the Board of Elections. And we're meeting today as the Board of Commissioners, but am I correct that the reason this is coming to us as the Board of Commissioners is this is an agreement into which we are entering? Could it be defined as a contract?
Yes.
Thank you. Since it could be defined as a contract, the county code stipulates the three commissioners, in their capacity and their role as commissioners, have the authority to enter into contracts.
You're exactly right.
Which is why we're doing this here and not at the Board of Elections.
Right.
Thank you for that. Mr. Kennedy, I'll turn it over to you. No questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. This is Proposed Resolution 305. May I have a motion?
I'd like to renew my injunction.
It is so noted for the record. Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dan, I will second your motion. Counselor, anything else before we take the vote?
No, sir.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Mr. Madore, we thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a proposed budget amendment. This would be Resolution 306. And anytime we receive unbudgeted revenue, because obviously, we, the budget we're currently operating under was formulated last calendar year and was implemented, voted upon in December of 2023. So periodically, we receive unanticipated revenue or unbudgeted revenue, and we have to document that fact and then also indicate which line item it would be referred to. So in this case, it's not a very big amount, but we still have to document it. This, I believe, comes through the Public Safety Department?
Yes.
Thank you. Public Safety Department received $12 through an emergency management planning and training grant, and they're asking that that $12 be earmarked to the line item in their budget of Emergency Management Planning and Training Expense Fund. Also, the Public Safety Department received an additional, unanticipated $75 from the Region 13 Revenue Fund Account and the request is to transfer that $75 into the Region 13 Expense Fund Account. This will allow the Public Safety Office to close out those two grants. Did I miss anything?
No, that was perfect.
Okay.
Nothing bad.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, I'll see if you have any concerns. Okay, thank you. This is Resolution 306. Could I have a motion? Thank you, Dan, is there, I'll second. And if there are no other concerns, we can have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. The next resolution is number 307. It's also a budget amendment, and what we're looking at is unanticipated revenue of $46,708 that came in through the Indigent Defense Grant. And how that's being earmarked is that $44,991 of it will be transferred to the Personnel Expense Fund Account. Do you know which department that would be?
Public Defender.
Oh, Public Defender? Okay, thank you. So to repeat, of that $46,708 that's coming in to the Public Defender's Office, $44,991 will be earmarked for their Personnel Expense Fund Account, and $1,717 will go towards. and $1,717 will go towards their supplies and operating expenses, uh, line item. Mr. Kennedy, any questions? Okay, thank you. Would you care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for the resolution 307.
Thank you, Dan, I'll second your motion. We'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. The next, uh, proposed resolution, number 308, once again, it's a budget amendment. And my guess here is the Planning Office, it's gonna be my guess.
Assessors.
Oh, I was wrong, I stand corrected. Forgive me. Um, now wait a minute. I'm talking about the, uh, the Fair Grant.
Yeah, this was submitted by J.R., uh...
Not, not the Appraisement?
See, I'm...
I, I've got, I've got the Fair Grant and then I've got the Appraisement one following it. I, I, my assumption...
You're right, yes.
Yes, they're just back, they're out.
Oh, okay, there were, okay.
Yeah, the next one is, um, Assessment.
Okay.
They're just backwards.
So the, the Fair Grant, which will take up first, number 308. And I may have, I may have mixed them up.
No, it's number 11 on the agenda, but it should be number 10 if you're going by the order that your pack comes in.
Okay. So we'll look at, um... This will be number 308, we'll, we'll discuss this one. It's the Fair Grant Revenue Fund Account, which would be planning.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And the Fair Grant stands for Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund. So the Planning Office received an additional $50,000 that they had not budgeted for. Uh, notes here that the grant came in higher than what was budgeted. And they are asking that that amount be transferred to the Redevelopment Authority's Expense Fund Account. Uh, Dan, you're, you up to speed on this? They, they got...
It said $100,000 on here, but that's the total, you know, with the...
All.
$50,000.
Yeah.
It should be $50,000?
Actually, you know what?
Yeah, it is $50,000.
Number 11 should say 50,000 on the printed agenda?
Yeah, the, the one for, um, planning is for $50,000.
Okay.
That's with the budget amendment, yeah, that's a mistake on the agenda.
Okay, so for those of you who have an agenda under number 11, where it says Budget Amendment Planning, that $3,435 figure is not correct, it should read $50,000. Is that right, Vanessa?
We can, 100 should read 50,000.
Yes, correct, the 100...
And then the next one would be for $3,435.
Correct. Yes, the planning one is correct for $3,435.
Now, now I'm really mixed up, I'm sorry.
What is the Appraisal Revenue Fund Account, like, $3,435?
The Fair Grant, like, sort of, came from the Assessment Office. So that should read $50,000.
Yeah, but, okay.
$100,000 on the agenda. If you look at the budget amendment, it, it has $50,000.
Yes. So is, is the 100 incorrect?
It is incorrect.
On the agenda?
Correct.
So number 10 should read?
$50,000.
$50,000?
Yes.
And I, I'm still confused because I thought the, the Fair Grant would have gone or would have come in through the Planning Office because they're earmarking it for the Redevelopment Authority.
Well, I see that, but I don't, they aren't, have submitted that.
Okay, all right.
I think the numbers are just, Planning should fall under number 10.
Correct.
And, and Assessment should fall under 11 for $3,435. So when we get to number 309, that's the Assessment Office for, for professional appraisement.
Okay. All right. So number, proposed resolution 308 is the $50,000 figure that we've just corrected under number 10 on the printed agenda. And that is the $50,000 that is coming in from the Fair Grant and is being earmarked for the Redevelopment Authority. This is number 308.
Correct.
Are, are you caught up?
Yes.
Okay. Would you care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for number 308.
Thank you, Dan, and I will second your motion. Take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then, um, under, uh, number 11, uh, this is the one that the Assessment Office did provide. And they had not budgeted $3,435 under Appraisement Revenues. And they would like to earmark that amount towards the Professional Appraisement Expense Fund Account. This would be resolution number 3, uh...
309.
309.
Yep.
Dan, do you have any concerns? Did you wish to make a motion?
Make a motion for the resolution 309.
Thank you, I'll second your motion. Any further comments or discussion? Take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Then we have a number of administrative transfers, which, Dan, I'm gonna read through these. You stop me, please, if you have any question on it. First one, under the Commissioner's Office, we're taking a total of $200 from the Commissioner's contingency, we're transferring $100 into the Travel and Training Line Item and also $100 into Materials and Supplies. The Veterans Affairs Office is asking for a $255 transfer from their line item of Veterans Burials into that of Equipment Lease and Rentals. Also from the Veterans Office, they're asking for a transfer of $250. The agenda says 255, uh, the request says 250. Am I to assume that the 250 is correct?
250.
250.
But if you look on, you look on your printed agenda, it says 250 on this.
No, that's the first one.
No, that's the first.
This is what I'm referring to, this says 255.
They did request 55 for the Equipment and Leaks.
That's...
Oh, okay, that was my, now that was definitely my mistake. I misread it, I apologize. Let me go back a step. The first request from the veterans, I, I do apologize, is a $255 transfer from Veterans Burial into Equipment Lease and Rental. The second request, which would be D on the printed agenda, is $250 from Veterans Burial into that of Postage.
Correct.
Again, forgive my error. And then finally, the Human Resources Office is asking for a transfer from their line item of Travel and Training into their line item of Maintenance and Repair. Dan, I went through those pretty quickly, do you have any other questions?
No.
Would you care to make a motion to approve those transfer requests?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
Thank you, Dan, I'll second your motion. There are no other questions, we can take a roll call.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Couple of announcements before we, uh, move to public comment. The Board of Commissioners will reconvene one week from today in this room at 10:00 a.m. It's open to the public. Normally on, uh, today, the Lawrence County Opioid Advisory Board, the whole bare monthly meeting. However, that meeting has been canceled. Also, the county's Planning Commission meeting, uh, that would have taken place next, uh, Wednesday, October 9, that meeting has been canceled. And as I noted, uh, earlier, one week from today, the West Central Job Partnership Governing Board will hold its quarterly meeting, open to the public at 1:30 at the Mercer County Courthouse. And then finally, uh, our courthouse will be closed on Monday, October 14 in observance of the Columbus Day holiday. That now takes us to, uh, public comment, and I will open the floor for comments or questions that anyone might have at this time. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, just as a follow-up, uh, regarding objections. Uh, I can file an objection, anybody can file an objection at any time during the meeting. It does not have to come in early public comment, it can be any time. Things change throughout the meeting. You can reveal things in your discussions that someone might object to, that can be made at any time. And just to clarify, my objection is that the public was not provided a copy of the engagement letter. Um, that's a financial record, we're allowed to review it, because that's an expense of the taxpayers. I also like to just point out the timeline of things. The initial King's Bank suit that was filed by the RNC and the State, um, uh, Republican Party was filed on September 18. You could have scheduled a special meeting, you could have, you made the agreement on the 24th, the next time you met. Now, the second suit, that wasn't filed until just yesterday, so it's appropriate to be approved today. Either way, the public should be able to see that record before it's approved. Uh, that's the end of my comment.
Thank you very much.
So I just have a couple of questions. Um, I wanna know how they entered an argument on behalf of Lawrence County when you just approved this law firm today? So they entered an argument on our behalf with all these other counties. And I spoke with five counties yesterday, which they're, there's 10 counties that are, that, um, Babst Allen is representing in this, uh, the RNC versus Al Schmidt. So how, they didn't know either. But I wanna know how they entered an argument on our behalf before they're even hired? Because do we have them on a retainer? Do we have the ability to have a third-party law firm on a retainer? And if that's the case, we're a Republican held courthouse. We should have the Republican representative law firm that it covers, especially in election law. I mean, you guys, this is gonna be a nightmare this year.
Let me note too, Mrs. Ryan, that the majority of the counties that Mr. Madora listed who are also affiliated with Babst Cleveland Law Firm are Republican-controlled courthouses.
Exactly, and the, and the county chairs in those counties had no idea this was going on. And when it was brought to our attention, like, they, they're going to, and I talked to a county commissioner in the Mango County, he's also, you know, part of the State Committee. Uh, he thought it was odd, but he didn't have the time to delve into the case. And, and my concern is, these, this is the year we need to cross our Ts and dot our Is and cover our bases. And why we are hiring or allowing a liberal law firm to represent us is absurd. And it's almost like they're trying to slide this under the rug while nobody's paying attention. Well, people are paying attention as of yesterday. So, um, I, I just, how do we have somebody on a retainer? Or where's the contract of the hourly fees? Because in the state of Pennsylvania, you cannot be an attorney and practice and not have a contract with your client. So where's our contract? Like, can we get a copy of our contract?
Yes, you can.
Because he can't practice, you know, in this state without, with, you know, and they just arbitrarily charge whatever they want, which, I mean, it sounds like it, it's not that much. But it, it maybe not be the price that we're paying in, in legal fees, but it's the price that we're paying in, in our liberties and our freedoms, which is, you know, priceless. So I just, um, it's just very frustrating because we worked so hard to, to win these elections and to defend our rights and our freedoms. And it seems, seems like every time we turn around, we're, it's an uphill battle and some of this should not be this difficult. So that's, that was my case.
Well, thank you, and, and I'll note that, you know, we're named in a suit, we have to be represented legally.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree, but why are we hiring Republicans to defend us?
We, I don't have a problem with hiring special counsel. It's not, I don't want that to be taken that way at all. It, it's appropriate. The selection of that special counsel needs to be made public ahead of time, not re- retroactively. Um, and we're just weighing in and, and explaining our opinion on this election.
We appreciate your doing, thank you. Other public comments?
Just one, one comment. When Attorney Madora made a comment that we just fell in love with election law. I don't know what that actually means, but if we have attorneys representing us who happen to be bad attorney, and he said the previous four or five cases, or it was four or five years, that this attorney group has represented this whole group, uh, almost exclusively on election law. What was the outcome of each of those cases? Were those cases favorable to Republicans? Or were all those cases one unfavorable to Republicans? I think that's a key point as well, although it may not have, I mean, this is a completely different. But if all those cases turned out not in favor of Republicans, then why would we be hiring this offer?
Right. Which is, which is the point. I showed cases where they, that she thought, again, this woman, that Elizabeth Dupree, that's a Dupree, is who is representing us in these two cases and in the past. And she has challenged the Republicans with Zucker Box in 2020 and in this woman in Center County, who was calling her residence a dormitory that had been, had been demolished three years previous. So that was not, those were not favorable, uh, court cases for the Republican Party.
So was she represented each?
She represented...
All, all these 10?
Yes.
She represented 10?
Well, she rep- in the, in the Zucker Box, she represented, I guess, 16. Now, in this case, right now, she's got 10 counties, of which, when I brought it to their attention, you know, it's, it's, everyone's doing what we're doing. I mean, we have to fight this. We have to, we have to be represented, you know, we work hard to win elections and have Republican courthouses. And we need to hire law firms that have our back and have our best interests. And we, like I said, we have lawyers in this courthouse that might even do it for free, you know? You don't know, has anybody asked them? I mean, not in this courthouse, but in this county. We have Republican attorneys that could represent us. Or we could, you know, collectively with all these Republican counties, hire Mark Scrangi's firm, which I talked to him yesterday several times, and they would be happy to take this on and need her price. But I didn't have a contract, so I didn't know what the price was. So, you know, in the future, I think we need to be defended by a Republican law firm or conservative law firm. That's just, I mean, common sense, because Democrats do not have our best interests at this point when it comes to election law.
Or transparency.
So in other words, if we hire, this is just a, a, a possibility, we hire this law firm versus a Republican law firm. This law firm represents us and this ballot, this decision about the Supreme Court goes where this is gonna take forever to complete, uh, the election in the state of Pennsylvania because people can have a hearing. And based on that, it's a hanging check, okay? Now, on this case, we have Republicans, I'm not saying how it's gonna turn out, but then you select Republicans and this goes forward the way we feel it should go forward and that we don't have all these shenanigans. I don't know, maybe they will do just as good a job as them. But our contention is, we don't think so. Because we need everybody behind us.
And then some, yeah, and then some. We need all the help we can get. We don't need to be fiving headwinds, we need to have the wind at our back.
It may all be little, but we want the best team on our side.
Right.
That's how it works in a, in a, in a court of law. You know, you are the coach. We are the coach, and we wanna pick the best players to represent us in, in a court of law. Because it's an even playing field, now we're, it's battle, okay, who's gonna win?
And we have 54 courthouses in the state. So, you know, could those 54 county commissioner, or 54 counties and the commissioners all get together and possibly collectively hire a law firm to represent them? I don't, I don't know, I just think that the cart went before the horse in this case, you know? She's already put in, submitted a filing of what's representing Lawrence County when you just hired her today.
Now, keep in mind, they've been represent- representing us, as Mr. Madora noted, since before he was... since before he was actually the solicitor. We've utilized their services for, as he said, at least four years. I I need to call on, can you add your name from the record?
Michelle Ponte. Um, I, this was just brought to my attention within the last few days. And, you know, we we support our candidates, and we put our candidates in office to represent us here in Lawrence County. I have a question for both of you. Were you aware of this before? Because I wasn't, and it was just brought to my attention. And I'm thinking that, you know, were you aware of the situation going on in these lawsuits being filed?
Absolutely. And you read it in the paper every day. The courts are sending out rulings practically on a daily basis on these election matters.
Okay, well, I'm I'm not following this, like I said. I was just brought, it was just brought to my attention. So I'm wondering like how much knowledge you have of this prior to this.
One of the reasons that we are not able to begin distribution of mail-in ballots until this week was because there were legal matters in front of the courts relative to who could or could not be on the ballot. So our hands were tied. We we weren't able to send out ballots until the courts resolved them. And then, you know, you've got the whole process, things start, the Commonwealth Court, they get appealed to the Supreme Court, and sometimes the Supreme Court overturns what the Commonwealth Court does. We're getting information almost on a daily basis about court rulings. And it's making Mr. Germany's head spin, I'm sure. And, you know, because one day we've gotta do this, the next day we've gotta do that. We're at the mercy of the courts, we're at the mercy of the legislature, we're at the mercy of the Department of State. We don't make these rules, we follow them. And we abide by the law, both laws that are passed by the legislature and that are interpreted by the courts. That's what we took an oath to do, and that's what we will do. We'll obey the laws, but we can't make those laws, we can't change those laws. We have to adhere to them, and that's what we're gonna do.
I I think last week alone, Tim was tracking us down at the end of the week three to four times. And every time it was changing constantly.
And it's gonna continue like this, because I've been told there's gonna be a case on us every day. And that they're gonna, they're all gonna be King's bench where it goes right to the Supreme Court, so that it speeds speeds it along. But all I'm saying, all I'm advocating for the Republican viewpoint and could you have our backs in this? And could we, could we hire someone who would have our backs? Because her history is not uh anything that I want representing the Republicans of Lawrence County. And we are a vast majority. I mean, we're not a red county, we're, you know, we're not a red county, we're a deep red county. So, you know, as respect to all of those people, you know, they're not gonna be happy if these decisions go against us. And Al Schmidt is the Secretary of State who was appointed by the governor, who we all know uh loves mail-in ballots and, you know, loves all the things that have given the rest of us major migraines. You know, it's just a thorn in our side and a headache. And he, Al Schmidt does not want anything that's going to favor a Republican outturn or a Trump victory or, you know, helping us at all in these elections. So all I'm doing, I'm trying to advocate on behalf of all the registered Republicans in this county. And quite frankly, I've got friends all around this country. I've worked with people all around this country, and they're on what's happening in Pennsylvania. Because so goes Pennsylvania, so goes the country, and it's a federal election. And and this is absurd, that you could cure a ballot because you made mistakes, and you could have days afterwards to have a hearing and change your ballot. It's absurd, absolutely absurd. So we have, we we have a liberal attorney that's gonna represent Lawrence County in this case. And they're gonna tell us, Lawrence County, how to run our election law when we are a a a Commonwealth.
No. The legislature and the courts and the Department of State will tell us how to run the election.
Right, right.
That's who it tells.
Which is what I'm saying, is that Al Schmidt is gonna tell Lawrence County, you're gonna cure this ballot, even if it's five days after the election.
If the courts, if the courts say that's the case, we'll adhere to what the courts tell us to do. We will obey the law.
Right, but what I'm saying is, wouldn't you rather have uh representation that is against curing ballots?
I've seen.
I mean, that will drag this out, and we'll have national media attention descending upon all of our courthouses?
Again, it rests with what the courts decide.
Right.
Once the courts make those decisions, we have to live with them, whether we like them or not.
Right, but what, all I'm saying is, we need, right, I respect that. But all I'm saying is, shouldn't we hire someone who has our interests at heart and has our backs and is not advocating for this?
We do recognize that the biggest problem here is the legislature and the code that they gave us. It's a disaster. It's almost a hundred years old, then they made this ridiculous amendment that has completely complicated things. However, the Al Schmidt has been sending out directives that he has no authority to do. And now, in light of Loper Frey, which reversed the Chevron deference. The counties, nobody should be deferring to Al Schmidt for his opinion on what the interpretation of the law is before the courts even review some of this. You can't defer to him as the expert, because the counties have complete control over their elections. It's the county's responsibility to make decisions on behalf of their electorate. Um, so, you know, we we do, I sympathize with you. We understand how complicated this. We understand that Tim is getting huge headaches because of all these changes. But we we have to be involved, we're just trying to stay involved in the fight, because we see problems that need to be prepared.
And I would say, the more complicated it seems, the better quarterback we want on our team. And that would be somebody who is conservative. And when they go in, they have a guttural feeling in the, in the face of their avenue that they're gonna fight tooth and nail to get the best results. They don't have that, they're gonna fight, but not tooth and nail. And what these ladies are saying is, we want to win. And so we have to have the best quarterback.
We want free and fair elections.
Yeah, that's what we have to do.
All we want is free and fair elections. And if I had a dollar for everybody that's told me, if we lose this election, I'm never voting again, because it's rigged. And, you know, this just, I'm not saying that this is rigged, but it has the appearance. Because there were so many of us, like I said, I, I set the alarm bell off with so many county chairs yesterday. None of us knew this was happening. I mean, I was made aware of it last week, but when I got a list of the counties that she was representing, no one knew this. And and it's, it's almost like they're trying to slip it under the rug and, you know, be very quiet about it and coy. But this is gonna be like the double whammy this time, you know? Because we have fought them on the mail-in ballots and the voter registration, and we're exceeding expectations in all of those categories. And so now this is a third way to cheat, you know? And and it's very hard to instill confidence in the electorate when it just seems like every avenue that you go down is just another path of corruption or potential fraud. And it's unfortunate, but, you know, there is no state in the country that is got the issues that Pennsylvania has. It's embarrassing. But the whole country is descending on us. We are ground zero in this election. All you have to do is look at how many times the top of the ticket is in the state, you know? There's one every day in the state. So, you know, we are ground zero. And we, you know, I don't want negative headlines in Lawrence County because of some of these decisions and our representation. And I just think we can do better, you know, we should do better. And it, just because they've represented us in the past doesn't mean moving forward, that's who we use.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Tony, you're up. Who has the authority to choose what law firm is being used?
The three of us do.
And I don't hear nothing, no feedback from the commissioners, that this is a big issue. You seem, you seem content to let things go. And it's not, it's not.
Once again, the firm we're talking about has been utilized by the county for over four years.
That's irrelevant to me.
Well, it's not to me.
Well, sir, if we're, if your constituents would like to see a better representation, why are you behind that?
We have eighty-six thousand people living in this county, and the three of us represent all eighty-six thousand of those people. Our job here today is to listen to what you folks have to say. But our own decisions are based upon what's in the best interest of the county government and the people of this county.
Okay.
And I have faith and trust in Mr. Mador, the recommendation that he's given to us, as is taking place in numerous other counties in the Commonwealth as it relates to these court cases.
Well, she just pointed out that she's talked to other people from different counties, and they were totally unaware of the law firm's background and would like a change. I don't, I don't see why the change is not possible.
Now, until I'm given firm evidence to that effect, I will follow the recommendation of our solicitor. And again, based on the track record, this firm was brought to us by the prior solicitor. Mr. Mador inherited this. And for that matter, so did Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Samana. So they can't, they, you know, this happened prior to them being here.
Correct.
So you're okay that she she defended the Zuckerbox, not to steal your thunder, don't. But, you know, three hu- three and a half mil- over three and a half million dollars was uh brought into the state through Mark Zuckerberg, and it was a one hundred percent of the money was spent for Democrats to work the polls in the election or work the poll watching.
Attorneys represent people of all political stripes.
So so she defended a woman who lived in New York State, but was voting in Pennsylvania illegally.
And and whether that woman was right or wrong, she had the right to have legal defense. That's the beauty of our system. Everybody has the right to be defended legally, and there's due process as well. Whether you agree with it or not, they have the right to be defended legally.
So you're okay with the fact that a hundred percent of the firm's donations have been to Florida PACs?
I don't know if that's accurate or not, I'm.
I have the, I have the list right here, I can give it to you. I mean, it's all, it's all political, all the donations have been made to um liberals. And, you know, Nancy Pelosi, personally, she donated to Nancy Pelosi. But it's all, it's thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars to um to a PAC for um, who knows, bless.
I I'd also just go out, we are, we're the only Republican-held county that has a Democrat solicitor, the only one.
So thirty-one thousand dollars to Clements and Zonemer PAC. Um, twenty-six hundred dollars Kathleen Cooper, thirty-five hundred dollars Mansion for West Virginia, twenty thousand to Friends of Richard Fitzgerald, uh, seven thousand to the Committee to Elect Michael Lamb, seventy-five hundred to Danny for Mayor. None of these are Republicans. So it's just like the um USPS, the unions. Ninety-five percent of their money goes to um, ninety-five percent of the union workers for the USPS donate to Democrats, and the union just endorsed Harris for president. So, you know, it's the same thing, when you, all of your expenditures, there's ninety-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars um contributed to Republicans, or to Democrats out of this firm in the la- in this this year of this. You know, it's, I just think we could do better. And I think that moving forward, you know, obviously, it's too late in this case. Um, but moving forward, we need to look at maybe getting all fifty-four counties, you know, to hire Scranji Law Firm in in Harrisburg. Now, I'm partial, I know him well, he's, you know, he's got a a podcast, a radio show every Saturday that promotes Republican candidates. But I know he's tried and true, he was a delegate in twenty sixteen to the RNC with me for for Donald Trump. I I know he's on our team, and he's done an excellent job. And, you know, who knows what his race would be? But I don't even think, it it, I don't care what the cost is in this. You know, raise my taxes, they keep going up every time I bat an eyelash anyway. I would rather pay more taxes and pay a higher legal fee and have my republic preserved and my constitution preserved. So that's all, you know, I I don't wanna get on these ramps, but we have to protect ourselves here. Because our, our republic is at risk. And, you know, the, these election laws are key. And these cases are gonna be coming up according to what I've heard on a daily basis. So, you know, and I'll see, I'm hoping to see Josh Parsons this week, and I will talk to him about maybe getting the commissioners around the state, the Republican commissioners, to, you know, work together to hire somebody to represent us, especially in election law. Like I said, if it's fish and wild, it's it's a zoning issue with Cascade Park, you know, hire that firm. But when it's election law, we need to have Republicans having our back.
Thank you.
One other question, Commissioner. Uh, you made a comment, I think more or less a statement, that you have to, and well, my question then will be, what evidence do you need to change your mind in this case? I mean, you keep going back, we've had it for five years. It's really, I mean, all due respect means nothing to me, okay? Uh, I mean, if you go to a physician for five years and you're not getting better, are you going to change? Okay? So the thing here is, what evidence do you need as a commissioner to change your mind? What evidence?
I, again, as I stated, I rely very heavily on the recommendation of our solicitor. It's a gentleman in whom I have a great deal of faith and trust. But if you folks have written documentation that you'd like to submit to us to take into consideration, I'd be glad to look at it.
That's fair.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, Debbie?
I ask a question.
Of course.
Have you actually seen what this law firm has filed on behalf of the county?
I have not.
Wouldn't that be somebody to read when they're filing?
Mr. Mador does that in his capacity as our county solicitor.
Does he have copies available to show us?
I would assume that he does.
Okay.
If if they are, if they have been given to him.
But, you know, how did, how did she submit, how did she submit uh what Lawrence County's stance was when you just voted on hiring her today?
We've had an ongoing relationship with this firm. If if we've not hired them today, what we did today was enter into contracts on these specific issues. We've utilized their services in the past as well for other election-related issues.
Right, but didn't she jump the gun? Because she hadn't been hired yet on this particular case?
No, we, in order for us to hire on these specific matters, they have to go in front of us in a public meeting. You talk about transparency, we have to do this in a public meeting. It has to be voted on in public.
So we have this firm as a retainer?
To the best of my knowledge, we do. We've utilized them in the past, and Mr. Mador would have the necessary documents.
But before you, when you agreed on this, did you know that even though we're here discussing this issue, that no matter what happens, they, she is going to represent us in this particular case?
I truly don't know which attorney from their firm is taking the lead on this.
But they are gonna be represented, that firm's gonna be represented.
That firm, yes.
Oh, wow, that's horrible.
Which, again, that firm was was brought to us before Mr. Mador was here by the previous county solicitor.
But then why would you vote on it when you have concerned citizens here? That you could say, well, let's get together next week before we vote on it, just like, you know, admit it, you're gonna vote on those next week. Why did, why did you vote on it?
Because on these court cases, time is of the essence. These things are moving at a very fast pace, Doctor.
Yes, but but still, and this case is so important.
Every case is important.
This case is really important.
Every case is important related.
Not as important as this one. This case could potentially change the whole landscape of this country. So I would never have voted on this. If you say your vote has basically in concrete put that law firm on this case when there's a lot of questions, I don't understand that. You could easily have said, let's come back to this next week. Well, we could have had a lot, we just found out, I just found out about this last week. We just found out about it last week. So why would we agree to something so important in concrete if that's the case? I don't, I don't understand that at all. That's, to me, it's not concrete.
Are there other comments? Debbie, anything else? Closing comments from my colleague, Mr. Kennedy, nothing. Uh, Vanessa or Joe, anything you leave missed? We appreciate everybody being here today, appreciate your input. And there being no other business to be brought before the board, may I have an adjournment?
I'll make it.
I'll second your motion, all those who favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, the same sign. Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.